I call the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, July 13, 2020 at 6:03 PM to order. And as always, we'll start with invocation. If I'd please stand with me. Almighty gracious heavenly Father, Creator of all things, we give you thanks for this day, the beauty of the day. We thank you for giving us grace and allowing us to come tonight and do the work of the county. And Father, we pray that you will give us the wisdom and the direction that we need to go in. And now, Father, we just say one more time to you, thank you for all you do for us and all of these things. We give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which we are bound with which we stand, on a nation, unbroken, indivisible, with faith and reason, just as it is now.
Okay. So that with approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Agreed.
Second, any discussion? Not everybody in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bring four oh. Next is comments from our county commissioners and our county manager, and we'll start with Commissioner Morris.
Yes, Chairman. First of all, welcome, everybody. It's good to see everybody here and hopefully some folks on the camera watching us as well tonight. I'm going to continue to do my office hours virtually or really by telephone. So tomorrow night's my office hour night from 4:00 to 7:00, so I'll make sure I keep that time open if somebody wants to call and talk about an issue related to the county. Last thing I want to mention during my time here is I want to read to you an advertisement that we're putting out for the Hospital Operations Committee so we can get the rest of the board members selected and appointed. And so let me just read it to you self-explanatory and tell you how to apply if you're interested in being on that committee. And this is, this is Kristi up at the hospital, putting this advertisement out in several places. Do you have business or healthcare experience and would like to become a board member of the Hospital Operations Committee of Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Incorporated? Yes, Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Incorporated. Due to the lease structure with Stokes County, Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital remained a corporation with Stokes County as the sole member. The current Stokes County Commissioners are automatically the Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Board. With the restated bylaws, a Hospital Operations Committee is to be formed to work on behalf of the Commissioners for the hospital, lease oversight, and to monitor compliance by the L C, which currently is Life Bright Community Hospital of Stokes. Hospital Operations Committee shall consist of nine voting members appointed by the Board of Trustees, that's the county commissioners, for a two-year term. These members shall be one county commissioner plus one elected official from each municipality located in Stokes County, and five at-large members from all geographical areas of the county. The elected officials have been chosen, and the five at-large members are needed for this committee to be fully staffed. Interested parties can download the application, that's to become one of the five at-large members, from a link that's listed here, I'll read, https://lifebrightstokes.com/hospitaloperations-committeeboard. Or you can request a paper copy by contacting Kristi Blaylock at 336-593-5311. That's 336-593-5311. Or you can send Kristi an email, and that address is kblaylock@lifebrightstokes.com. Applications need to be submitted by Monday, August 3, 2020. You may mail the application to Life Bright Community Hospital of Stokes, Attention Administration, Post Office, Box 10, Danbury, North Carolina, 27016. Or email applications to Kristi Blaylock, again at that email address, kblaylock@lifebrightstokes.com. Feel free to contact Kristi with any questions at 336-593-5311, or at the email address I just stated. We appreciate your interest in becoming a member to help assist with continued high-quality healthcare services throughout Stokes County. So as soon as we get these applications in, the four board members who have already been appointed, we'll go through the applications and recommend five of them to come back to the Commissioners for approval. So that's what we're trying to get done here so we can get underway. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Director Chairman.
Good to see the folks here with us this evening, and it's good to know that people watch us. I had some feedback over the weekend from someone who watches our meetings, and it was encouraging to know that there are people out there who are actually watching our Commissioners meetings. One thing that I'd like to mention is, when I was getting ready to go through my agenda, I found a letter that had been in my computer bag, whatever, for, well, since this past meeting. And it was from a pretty good number of people wanting internet and wanting to know when and how they could get it. I don't quite know what to tell them, because here's why. We have at least two providers, we have River Street and Stokes Wi-Fi, and I don't know which of those two providers can get to these folks quicker. That kind of led me to believe that when we were going through the budget process, we talked about a committee, or well, I'd rather say a task force. Committees in a lot of towns don't get much done, but maybe a task force would work better, to really look at how we're going to get Wi-Fi to the folks in our county who need it most. And I know River Street has made some progress, but from what I'm hearing and understanding, Stokes Wi-Fi is making some progress too. So really, I think something like this task force to try to fit the pieces together and see which provider, or maybe there even are others, could get service to the people who need it quickest and without, with the least amount of redundancy, with the least amount of duplication. So just wanted to toss that out for the Board's consideration. This is something I know Chairman Nicholson mentioned, I guess this was also during a budget session, that when he was campaigning, this was one of the things he was campaigning to do, was to get Wi-Fi to folks. And I've certainly felt that way all along. I've supported River Street for years and really kind of helped give them a kickstart. And they've made some progress, wish they'd made more, a lot of us do. But anyway, just something for the Board to consider. And the other thing is, I sure am running into a lot of people that will be glad when all this virus stuff has run its course, or whatever, and we can get back, get our lives back. I'm talking to people who feel like part of their lives have just been taken away. They don't know how to, they're getting very frustrated, how to continue to have to deal with all the things related to the virus. And I know there's harm, there's, people die, there's a lot of people die from the regular flu too, and have it every year. We don't hear the numbers on how many people have had the regular flu, but I got so tired of picking up the Winston-Salem Journal, and we got 19 more cases. Top of the first page, well, come on, you've said that for months, and if you're going to give me some information, give me all, how many people have had regular flu, for example. But anyway, I know Commissioner Morris had some prepared statements a few meetings ago. I thought he was very much on target at that time, and Commissioner Morris, I think those same statements would apply very much today as well. But it's going to be good. We were joking about who has to wear a mask, for example. Well, I don't think we're going to throw any of these folks out for not wearing a mask. And that's the question, I've got thrown out of one restaurant so far for not wearing a mask, and that was in K. But people are confused, I went in another restaurant, 20% of the people coming in and going out wore a mask, 80% didn't. So you just don't know. But maybe we're on the downhill side of it, I certainly hope so. And I continue to give my promise, or whatever word will apply best, to our citizens in the county, I will do everything I will do, I can do as a Commissioner to help things get back to normal. I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Lane?
Just say I'm glad to be here tonight, and hopefully we'll get the temperature down next short while. Damn, we've had some hot days.
Thank you. I also want to say to each and every person here, thank you for coming out tonight. As I say at every meeting, it's very important that the citizens of Stokes County take support in our governmental process. So if you made it out tonight, thank you very much. And for everybody that is watching as we live stream, we welcome you also. And I do want to just mention that Shannon has just told me that we're having some issues with our IT tonight.
There's something, we're showing recording and we're showing streaming, but I always pull it up and check it as we start, and I couldn't get a live feed. And so I texted a few people watching, and they're not seeing it either, so IT is aware, and they're trying to correct it. But we're recording, we'll have an archived video, if not the worst-case scenario, up in the morning, but for the moment, it's not actually live streaming.
I just want to make everybody aware of that, what we're dealing with right now. We'll do our best to get it up and going. And to everybody here, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. If you got to come to our Charters of Freedom dedication ceremony, I think you got to see something that is really going to be a valuable asset to the county, and not just to the adult citizens, but to the students, and the teachers, and the educators of this county. Because I know when I was principal at Sandy Ridge, we took our fifth grade class to Washington each year, and we got to see what we have just put out there, which was the Declaration of Independence, Bill of Rights, and the Constitution, and it was a great thing. Now they can come right here to Danbury and make a field trip out of it, and get to see something that, in my words, is just magnificent. That's what the founders built this nation on, and now they can just drive right over here to Danbury, and it's right out there in front of them. And I just think if, for all the people that got to come, I am so grateful, and if you missed it, I just think you missed a very wonderful ceremony. And to all the people that had a part in it, I know if I start naming off a few, I will miss some, but there's two or three in here right now that had a big part in it. I don't want to mark, well, everybody in here that had a part in it, we appreciate that. Did a good, fantastic job. I thought it turned out great. And also to the, we had a fireworks show up at Honey Grove Middle School Football Field, and it had a great turnout, a fantastic turnout. I know some of the Commissioners were there, Commissioner Morris I know was there, and Commissioner Nicholson. And myself. And it was made possible by Sheriff Mike Marshall and Andy Nicholson, is that correct? And was Will Carter, Will? Thank you, Will.
Yes, sir.
Thank all of y'all for making that possible. It was a tremendous turnout.
Estimated 3,000.
Estimated 3,000 people there? That was wonderful. They all seemed to have a good time and enjoy it. And that's all I have, so I'm going to turn it over to our county manager, Mr..
Sounds like you guys have covered it. I want to welcome everyone here tonight, and those that could be viewing. But anyway, I hope everybody's well, and Stokes County is doing well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We do not have anybody signed up for public comments tonight. There are some people here that will be doing some presentations, so they'll be recognized at that time. And so we'll move along to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second with questions.
Okay, we've got a second, and now we can have discussion and questions. Commissioner Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Julie, on that first budget amendment, that's the number one for the new budget, right? First one for the new budget. That is just re-appropriating things that, all of it's re-appropriating things that didn't get done last year, right? Okay. And then on the second one, number two, is that replaces the air conditioner in the Autumn Square Building in the garage area, right? But it doesn't apply to the office space up there, they have separate air, right?
They have separate.
Was $175,000 to replace that one?
Yeah.
Was that the total cost? Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Anybody else have any comments or questions before we get to approve? We've got a motion to approve in a second, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring four oh. And now we'll go to information agenda. And we've got a presentation tonight from Mr. Marcy on promoting biological agriculture and natural healthcare in Stokes County.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name is Sri Ananda Sarveshri, I go by Sarveshri, and I have a video presentation for you today. I'll be doing more videos, but we can start the video, and then I can take questions after the video, and they have questions from it. It's about an eight and a half minute video, thereabouts. The COVID-19 experience has made us keenly aware of viral threats to our health. Typically, coronaviruses infect 30 to 45 million people every year and kill roughly 50 to 60,000. When virus has spread, our most vulnerable populations are hit the hardest. It causes premature deaths, especially if there are pre-existing conditions. That means pre-existing degenerative diseases. Here's a short list and the deaths they cause. The COVID-19 death rates we see are really just the straw that broke the camel's back. 93% of deaths are from pre-existing conditions. According to the CDC, only 7% of deaths are due to COVID-19 alone. 93% are caused by the weight of pre-existing degenerative diseases. Our medical system has no cures for any of these degenerative diseases, nor do they have cures for the viruses that cause pandemics every year. This begs the question, why are we so sick, and what can we do about it? If COVID-19 has taught us anything, it's that our medical system is powerless to help. We have to look elsewhere. There's some hope that chloridil silver can give us a second immune system, but the real solution is much deeper. I'm the author of the book, Extraordinary Healthcare, and have nearly 50 years' experience in natural healthcare. I spent the past several years researching the primary causes of disease and what we can do. I'm going to share this with you now. The single underlying cause of every health problem is immune system weakness. When our immune system is weak, we're vulnerable to every virus and every degenerative disease. What causes immune weakness? According to former Surgeon General Dr. C. Everett Coop, 76% of all disease is due to lifestyle factors, poor diet, and poor nutrition. Here's a summary. These are causes that we have direct control over through our buying decisions, habits, and government regulations. If we learn how to care for ourselves naturally, these causes would disappear, along with at least 76% of all disease. But there's more. We have another pandemic, birth defects. Today, one out of every 33 children has a birth defect. That's 3%. COVID-19 has a fatality rate of 0.3%. Birth defects are 10 times higher. In veterinary science, there's only one birth defect in 500,000 births. That's 0.0002%. So something is horribly wrong. What's going on? Over the past 100 years, there's been an exponential rise in degenerative diseases such as cancer, diabetes, heart disease, Alzheimer's, and more. And now, an explosion in viral diseases. This is costing us over $3.5 trillion every year. Now look at this chart, over the same period. It shows the loss of minerals in our crops. When agriculture started using toxic chemicals to control pests, fungal diseases, and weeds, they also poisoned the soil. That killed the bacteria, earthworms, and mycorrhizal fungi that are absolutely essential for healthy crops. This in turn required farmers to use ever-increasing amounts of fertilizers just to get a crop. These expensive toxic chemicals and fertilizers have driven family farms into bankruptcy. They destroy the health of all our crops, and our human health as well. Crops today have a severe lack of nutrition compared to yesteryear. Look at the loss of minerals since 1910. We've been losing nutrition for over 100 years. This is why we're so sick. Our food supply is terribly mineral deficient. But not only minerals. Without those minerals, crops don't produce the protective polyphenols and antioxidants needed for a strong immune system. Polyphenols include flavonoids, lignans, resveratrol, and phenolic acids. Flavonoids include the colorful compounds found in fruits and vegetables, and phosyins, carotenoids, and hundreds of similar compounds that have antioxidant and other health-promoting, immune-strengthening properties. These compounds are called secondary metabolites. They're only abundant when crops are grown naturally, in mineral-rich soil without toxins, and allowed to mature fully. If harvested early, these beneficial metabolites are never created. When you go to the grocery store, you don't actually know what you're buying. You don't know if the produce you buy has any nutritional value at all. Unlike other consumer products, our agricultural products are never tested to see if they're any good, whether they have any nutritional value. If it looks okay, we assume it must be good. That is definitely not the case. In most cases, nutrition is severely lacking. A solution to our health crisis lies in a new, high-yield, non-toxic, mineral-rich agriculture that's better than organic and more profitable than conventional. It's called biological, non-toxic agriculture. Of conventional and organic agriculture, use excessive nitrogen and don't supply the missing minerals. Their products test extremely poor for nutrition, as much as 100 to 200 times less than they should be. Only biological agriculture balances minerals and massively increases soil life that's so necessary for truly healthy, high-yield crops. This means higher profits for farmers and healthier produce for everyone. Until now, farmers have been put in a bind. If they didn't use the expensive toxic chemicals and expensive seeds, they couldn't get a good crop. Now they can. There are farmers getting 400 bushels per acre corn with no external inputs. What can you do? You can help restore your family's health and our national health by letting everyone know about this new science of biological agriculture. We can't all become subsistence farmers. To get the high nutrient foods we need, we have to start talking to friends, family, local farmers, community gardeners, and home gardeners. We need to reverse the exponential rise of degenerative disease that's destroying our families and our nation. You might even want to start a small garden of your own. Also, talk about how important a healthy lifestyle is. Our quality of life depends upon our lifestyle. To learn more, visit these two websites, rebuildhealth.com and biognutrient.org.
So I can take some questions, if you'd like. Yes, what we'll do, if it's okay, I see that Commissioner Walker requested this to be placed on there, so I mean, all the Commissioners certainly will have an opportunity to have any questions or comments for you to ask, but since you're going to ask, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Mr. Acting Chairman. Sir President, good to see you, as always. You've been here at our meetings many times. How many years have you been coming to Commissioners' meetings?
I guess four or five years.
Four or five years, yeah. And always with the same purpose in mind, to have healthier citizens, healthier people. I know your goal, you stated at one point, was to have a healthy Stokes County. And you've put a lot of work into that over the years, different approaches, different things, always seemed to make good sense to me, good common sense. And from a conservative perspective, that has an especially good tone to it. I like this concept. One thing that I really would like to see, or like to have seen, is our county become a leading county in this area for producing good, healthy, wholesome foods locally. I mean, I was watching a program on YouTube this past evening. We can't grow avocados, but if you want to eat one, it's coming from Chile, Mexico, or California. Now, we can grow potatoes and sweet potatoes, corn, beans, tomatoes, cucumbers, squash, you name it. And there's a lot of folks in this county have a farming tradition. Their families have grown food for years, supplementing income, possibly with tobacco, but over a period of a number of years, families grew their own food. And back like you were showing with your chart, which I think your video is excellent, that's good quality stuff there, a lot of information. Some of your words were a little bit above me, but that's not, that's not all that unusual. But I think your concept is good, and I think your motive is good. You're just wanting to help people and see things turn in a better direction as far as the foods we eat. I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, because maybe some of the other Commissioners have some questions.
Mr. Morris, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just one question, Sir President, good seeing you again. When, if you, in this other document you sent out to us, it talks about, it says, if you're a large-scale field crop grower, it's about them learning how to adopt this new 21st century system of biological agriculture. What's the practicality of doing that whenever they're all set up to operate the other way, the traditional way?
There's some books out.
Or crop improvement specifically.
Good question. There's some books out on it. Gary Zimmer wrote a book on it. He's farming 5 to 10
He's farming 5,000 to 10,000 acres, and he's using this system. It's out there, but it's not widely known.
How do you transition from your traditional system when you have all this equipment and everything?
A lot of the same equipment can be used. Equipment that's used for spraying pesticides and herbicides and such can be used for foliar sprays, for nutritional sprays. And they can also be used for inoculating the soils with bacteria and the food for bacteria, which is basically sugar, so that the soil becomes active with bacteria. And bacteria provide tremendous nutrition for earthworms. So when you increase the bacterial count, then you're increasing the earthworm count. Increase the earthworm count, then you're creating tremendous amount of fertilizer per your crops. Farmers may have 12 to 20 earthworms per cubic foot. And with that kind of earthworm increase, it's like having multiple cattle, manure, all over your farm without having to do any work. So we're increasing the fertility of the soil this way and without the farmer having to pay for it. The inputs for this kind of agriculture are very cheap, mostly bulk minerals, like rock dust or other bulk minerals that don't need a lot of refining. And so those can be spread with any spreader, as is generally done now with lime and so forth on the fields. So it's a matter of understanding a new way of seeing agriculture. For instance, right now, we see pests as the bad guys, and they are the bad guys because they destroy the crops. But we don't see them as educators of what's going on. One way of seeing pests is that the pests are destroying the crops because they are unfit, unfit for human consumption, unfit for animal consumption. So it's the job of pests to destroy crops which are unfit. If we create a strong immune system in the crops, then they defend themselves, and we don't lose the crops to pests, and you don't have to spray for pests because the crops are self-defending. So those are some of the ideas behind this biological agriculture. There's a lot more to it.
Is there a location that, say, a Stokes County farmer could go to somewhere within a reasonable distance to see an example of this kind of farming being done? Like an experiment, like a research and development kind of farm, or a university farm or something where they're actually doing it?
I don't know of anybody that I can recommend locally right now. Biognutrient.org does keep some information on who's doing what. They have some different sites throughout the nation that are promoting biological agriculture.
That's one of the websites that was on the video.
Yeah, that was on the last slide.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that video?
You do have it.
Oh, we do? Where we have it?
Shannon has a copy.
Okay.
I'll send you the link today. He just sent me the link today to load.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Langford? I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you. And I'm good. I read back over this a couple of times, so I certainly feel comfortable with it as far as what I need to know. I'll go about one last time to Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Morris, through any last comments.
Thank you, sir.
So one thing.
Go ahead, Sir Langford, and then I have another comment or two.
Okay.
You can go first now if you'd like.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I have some land in the Water Cove area, and I've been hanging on to it for years and years, and many times I thought, well, I'd just go ahead and sell it, but I still have it. And there's several acres cleared on that particular piece of property, and I would be willing to let you do your experimenting on that property if we could get the equipment and people. I'm a little on the log in years, not able to do physical work quite as well as I used to be able to, but if we could find maybe some volunteers or some way of making this happen, I could provide some land for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't have the equipment to do that kind of.
There's neighbors to that land. There's friendly neighbors, actually, who might have some of the equipment we need.
Yeah, but they may even, you know, if I can talk with them, maybe they'll just go ahead and do it. One thing, I don't know if you saw it yet, was a news presentation at WXII. It's in the links that I provided, where they interviewed Eric Mathis, who I trained in Forsyth County. I started this in Forsyth County because I had an entree there. And they are creating high-density agriculture in Forsyth County, all community gardens and everywhere in Forsyth County. So they've already started, and they're already in the process of proving out the process and the nutritional density. I've been testing the nutritional density myself over the past four or five years, and nutritional density in our food is not good. But I don't have the expensive equipment that biognutrient.org has. They have the spectrometers and whatnot to give a detailed analysis, and they're doing that. And you can go to their website, and they're finding, like, the polyphenols of 100 to 200 times greater with biological agriculture, which is a huge thing because this is what's going to create a strong immune system. And we want to bring this kind of strength of immune system to Stokes County, the people of Stokes County.
Question, please. If you talked to someone and they say, "That sounds pretty good. I might like to give it a try," and they go ahead and push the button and start getting everything ready on their land and actually doing the things they need to do to make it happen from start to finish, how long a time period would they be looking at?
It's a process that takes anywhere from probably three to five years to fully accomplish because you've got to build up the life in the soil. If the life in the soil has not been built up yet, then what you do is you do foliar spray to provide nutrition directly that the plants can't get from the soil yet because the soil life has to build up, and they have to break down all those mineral additions to the soil to actually create the nutrition that the roots can take up. So when the roots don't have that availability yet, then foliar sprays are an intermediate solution.
So could a farmer start with a portion of their land, for example, and get a portion of their land maybe moving in this direction and continue farming regularly on the other part of their land till they get things kind of going sequentially?
Yeah, they should do that. They should learn in the process because it's a process of learning how nature works. And nature is inscrutable sometimes, you know. We get signals all the time from nature, but we're not used to looking at those signals and understanding what's going on. Certain weeds tell us what minerals are weak in the soil, for instance. And so if we look at the kind of weeds in our farm, then we can see, oh, I'm lacking this or I'm lacking that. And so there's some learning to do. There's some book resources available at biognutrient.org. I have a lot of those kind of resources. I've read probably, I think, 15, 20 books on agronomy related to this field of biological agriculture now. There's a lot of information on video that Dan Kitchrich has done. He's the person who heads up the biognutrient.org group, and he's a farmer. So there's a lot out there now, but it's not widespread yet. The information's available. I've been talking with the people in Raleigh, have not gotten them on board yet, and that's one reason why I was asking for some support from you guys, a letter of introduction from the commissioners. It said, "I'd like to be able to go out and promote this, and if the county is interested in health, interested in improving agriculture, then I can be a force going out into the county and talking to people, and it'd be nice if I had your blessing to do that." So that's why I'm asking for a letter of introduction. We can't do that today. Not everybody's here, but maybe next meeting, instead of an information agenda, maybe we can have an agenda to get that done. So any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have one last question. I just texted a corn grower who's pretty progressive around here that grows a lot of corn. He said he gets, last three years, he's got 180 bushels per acre. Your video says you can do 400 bushels per acre using this method. Is that really realistic? I mean, that's a heck of a big difference between her and your method. I mean, I would think if you can make that much more corn, there'd be a lot of interest in doing this.
Well, he's doing pretty well. Usually, in Stokes County, you're getting 75 to 100 bushels. So he's doing pretty well. Different areas of the country have abilities to grow bigger and better crops. If the soil is a high-low soil, like in Midwest, and you've got good fertilization and you've built up the soil a lot, then you can get more. We don't know yet what's possible in Stokes County until we try it. But if he's doing that well with what he's doing, he ought to be able to do better with biological agriculture.
How much better? Do you have any idea? I mean, just on what you've seen so far in the local area?
Most of my research has been national. So I've read books of, like Gary Zimmer's book, you know, he's up in the upper Midwest and so forth. There are some farmers who have gotten 500 bushels per acre. 400 bushels is, the record is 500 bushels per acre. The common thing is more like 300 to 400.
Okay. That's all I have. That's my last question.
Thank you for bringing this to us and your video production. And what we'll do, of course, is pass this, the county manager will pass this along to our chairman when he gets back in town, and we'll move on from there.
Great. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Before we start into our discussion agenda on the solar farm moratorium, just had a note handed to me that wanted clarification for the record that budget amendment number two for the air conditioner at the garage is for $7,500, not $175,000.
Okay, yeah, I wanted you to, I was hoping you'd mention that.
Yeah. What she did was she moved the money from contingency into the align item equipment under public buildings. The total of those two accounts together is 175, what's in there, but 7,500 will be reduced from equipment to replace the air conditioner.
Okay, good. I just misread that, so.
Just wanted to make sure nobody thought the air conditioner cost $175,000.
Kind of, I thought that was a big building.
I was looking at the internet thing over here, and then I went past by, and Jake said, "Do they say $175,000?"
Sometimes I think I trust Commissioner Morris a little too much. He says it's not.
Yeah, it's just a, sometimes you're looking at all those, like, I just wanted to make sure.
Sometimes I wouldn't just say, "Well, he must have done his homework."
You'd have one at your house likely, and it wouldn't surprise me if it was one.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion now, and our first item up is solar farm moratorium, and we've had a couple of meetings where we've discussed this, but this was, has to be brought up by Commissioner Morris, and I know he's got our planning director, David, here with us tonight, and so I'll start out with Commissioner Morris.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think from our discussion last time, I brought this back up because the fast pace of requests we're getting for these large-scale solar farms and my desire to have some policy in place to address them before we approve anymore, I would make a suggestion just to be thinking about while we talk with David or amongst ourselves on this resolution that instead of filling in, unless Ty says there's a problem with it, unless filling in a specific time for us, a moratorium, that we just do a moratorium until we have the policy in place. And that would be one approach we could take, just not approve any more solar farms till we get our policy done, and then we could put that on whatever schedule we want to. The other, the other thing I mentioned, or I asked Shannon to put all these, not resolutions, but these other policy documents in your packet just as reference so you can see that most of the other, a lot of the other counties, I think, I might told me half the counties in the state have policy for solar farms, and two of them in there, Rowan and Rockingham, the two of the ones I put in there, ask her to put in, they actually either discussed or did put moratoriums in place until they got their policy worked done. So that was my reason for doing it. If we approach it, trying to get the policy done, I would also suggest maybe we consider having the board members look through those documents or others, if you want to go find other policies, and maybe give David some suggestions on things that we consider that really need to be in the policy, and then let them come up with a draft policy similar to these that were in the agenda before we approve any more solar farms. Solar industrial sites, as I like to call them. I did a little bit of reading this weekend, a little bit more research on some of these I found a study NC State did a couple of years ago that shows that they had three elements on there, and he didn't address one of the three. I forget what that one was, but then there were two elements dealing with the soil and contamination and so forth that would be there after you remove the solar equipment out of the fields. And then the estimate of this study was it would take an additional $5,000 per acre and as much as three years to get the soil back to the condition where you could farm it, because there's potential for metal residue off of the actual equipment that's in the, being put in the ground, the post and so forth. And then there's also a whole deal with the pesticides that are used during the operation of solar farm that have to be reintegrated into the different layers of soil and so forth over two or three-year periods. So there's just a lot of unknown questions about what the long-term effects of these things are going to be, and so I think we owe it to the planning board and owe it to ourselves, too, to have some policy in place before we approve any others, and so that's really all I have to say about it for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Morris shares some good observations. I think with most things, there's an upside and a downside. I think in this situation, he's pointing out some of the risks, some of the benefits is it's good, cheap power, and it's green, and it doesn't pollute. And I actually am kind of a fan of solar farms. I think we have to use some caution. That's where one of the discussions we're having now. I would be interested in, at some point, Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in David Soder's view on this as planning director. And just see what he's been able to find out and what his thoughts are. I think it's good to do what Commissioner Morris suggested that he's been doing, and that's look at what other counties are doing, seeing what we can learn from how they're doing things. But I do support the concept. It's still what I would consider fairly new, and still there's some learning to be done. But at some point, I would like to hear from our planning director and see what his thoughts are as far as the moratorium.
And we've got David here tonight. I'm not, if he's, after each commissioner gets a chance for comment, we can allow him to certainly come up.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Langford, do you have anything you'd like to say or comment on the Commissioner Langford, do you have anything you'd like to say or comment on the solar farm? You're good to, okay. Okay, David, or do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight on this as planning director? If so, please come on up. All right, come on up. That's good.
Rick dropped awesome stuff. I had looked at it, and just wanted to let you know that I've seen a lot of these ordinances, and a lot of them are similar in their nature, what they cover. And based on the two hearings that we've had, and I want to let you know the county has, we've approved two, one October 1st and one June 2nd. And we've done approximately 1,116.07 acres devoted, has been approved for a solar farm development. And that doesn't include what Walnut Cove in the city of King has done. Walnut Cove, at the same time we did one last October, which were in conjunction as the jurisdictional boundaries were side by side, allowed 518.33 acres approved. And I think King has one about 76 acres. It used to be the Holder property. When I was doing economic development, we released that to the Holder family so they could get that developed. Walnut Cove has another smaller site out off of Fowler Road. Those are the ones that I know of on a commercial scale. And some of these ordinances for down east, where solar farms are huge megawatts that they're producing, and they're moving west as they run out of areas there. And, you know, Duke Energy's got to get their alternative energy sources 8% of their total production by 2025. So that's the result of hearing these requests and coming. One of the things that had come up, and I was looking at the ordinance, they're all very similar. And the way our zoning works and conditional zoning, if you look at the last hearing, the things that were put in there is very similar to what's already in these ordinance specified. Everything is conditional zoning, which requires a site plan. Therefore, you get a detailed thing of your plan of development. Issues that we're looking at is acreage, setbacks, the buffers, height limitations, reflectivity, how it may affect an airport. These are things that I look at during the site plan review. The decommissioning seems to be one of the big issues because the governor has put Environmental Management Commission to have him report, I think by January 1st, 2022, about a statewide decommissioning plan for solar and wind farms. I looked at some of the decommissioning plans, and one of the things that we had in our last approval was that one year prior to the decommissioning of the grant lease, a security in amount of 110% of the decommissioning cost of the facility shall, estimated by North Carolina Licensed Engineers, shall be included. The cost of decommission, the solar facility is described below, and then we describe it. And what it does, it puts, it's a cash value toward that property owner. Now, some of the other communities had, didn't have anything in decommissioning, and some of them put a surety or performance bond that the county held and would hold for years. But you've got to determine that these decommissioning costs, when we're looking at projects, could go from 25 to 30 years. Engineers project that out, and you could have that available to the county if you want to come up with some sort of decommissioning plan, if that was one of the most important factors. And I heard that mentioned in the two hearings that we had, and y'all were sitting there too. That seemed to be an issue of what do you do once the lifespan of these facilities has gone away? Most of the ordinances had definitions, where you locate them, security, regulations. Rick mentioned the types of, I guess it would be herbicides that you put, not so much pesticides, but herbicides you put on the ground. Some of them use natural type things, so we didn't really get involved with that. Kind of let that up to the applicant to determine how they would maintain the vegetation underneath. Some had put even have sheep that would graze in the facility to eat the grass and vegetation. Some are, I read somewhere where they're friendly to apiaries for honeybee production, to create things that would generate honeybees for pollination. All sorts of eco-friendly type ways of going about it. Now, the facilities we have are pretty large. So, I mean, there may be portions of that that can occur naturally. It may be something the board would want to look at. But based on our conditional use, conditional zoning, it does give you the opportunity during the hearing process, if you see a site specific, and I'll give you the example. The last hearing, there was a question about proximity to one property owner. Well, they set back, our standard setback was 50 feet. It went for the actual panels themselves, and now it's 175 foot. So those are the types of conditions that the board has the option of presenting to the applicant. And if agreed, that can become part of the condition. So you do have a lot of flexibility, unlike in our old conditional use where you had the standards set. Didn't give you, you had to follow those standards. We do have some flexibility in what the board can allow or request in these processes. I've told Rick that I'm a big proponent, I read this in one of our county lines. I don't know if y'all get that. It's NACO produces it out. I was talking about a county in Virginia that had the same issues of how much solar utility scale, solar farms would be allowed in the county. And what they did was took the square footage of the county and used 1%. Well, the county's like 293,000, it's 459 square miles, I think, 293,760 square miles. So you've got about 2,976 acres. What you, what the county has already done, I did a little quick calculation. Of 1%, the county's already done 38% of 1% allocated to that. Now, one of the things, and again, Rick and I talked about this even prior to him being on the board, was that when it's doing economic development, I don't see these, these are not economic development policies. You don't want to take up viable land. My recommendations, where we had these located, I was specific to look to see if we had infrastructure available or potentially available in the next 10 to 15 years that would make these sites kind of get in the way of development. They weren't. If these sites had been going down 311 toward Pine Hall, I would have been more concerned about using up available land there where there is potential over the next 20 to 30 years to create an infrastructure line from the county line to Walnut Cove. So that's kind of part of the way I've been looking at it. Also, I would like time to actually place this in our 2035 State's Comprehensive Plan. We don't specifically mention infrastructure-type improvements. And I think that is one thing, I will be talking to the board, our planning board. And by the way, we don't have one on the agenda for this month. We just have one rezoning for retail development. But that's something I'm going to be discussing with the board, because we only got one case. We'll have a little time to discuss it. Those are some of my ideas. I mean, we can come up with definite restrictions that can be placed on. Because right now, our, we grouped all this in, energy-producing power plants have to be in the light manufacturing, conditional zoning district, and you have to have more than 10 acres. You could look at areas of limiting that acreage. You can be more site-specific where you would like to see that. That could be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. And again, I spoke to Richard multiple times, you know, from a tax standpoint, I think Rick pointed out, you know, we're only going to get 80%. You get a rollback tax, but you're only going to get about 80% of what this solar farm is going to be valued at for tax purposes that comes back to the county. So it's not a cash cow for the county. It's good for a property owner, but it is alternative energy. And like Jimmy said, green energy is, has its place in the community. It's just kind of the board, I need direction to see where the board wants to stand on this as far as how much we're at.
Okay, Dave, thank you. And before you have a seat, I'll ask, and the commissioners, if you'd like to ask you. I'm asking, see, Commissioner.
Commissioner Langford has not had a turn.
He passed.
Okay. David, where is our planning board in this process?
Well, I mean, we're just taking them as they come in. And they had, basically, we go through the question process, just like you do in the, in the public hearing. In the public meeting, we get the same questions. And there were some similar concerns on this last one, based on that, what I said. What do you do after the effect? They heard the same basic presentation. They hear the same public coming in and commenting, questions about buffers, you know, the size, the decommissioning. Then there's questions about whether, after it's decommissioned and removed, or there are environmental issues that go along with it. And I'm not sure, based on all the hearings that I've heard, it's kind of either way on that, whether you kind of believe with this expert or you believe that expert on the environmental concerns on it. The materials you used, the last one was where are the materials being sourced from? Overseas, that typically is where you're going to get these panels manufactured. There was questions about that. So this kind of runs the gamut of different things that the board had questions about, much like you did in the, in the public process as we've gone through these two hearings.
Would it be a reasonable request to ask the, our planning board for a recommendation for a moratorium?
Well, we can, I'm here to take whatever direction. What I need from the board is, before I can start on anything, is just some general direction to go. And then you can add or delete or, you know, pick and choose as you wish on how you'd like to go about doing this. The board always has, now you got, again, under the conditional zoning, you have lots of options, and you just simply have to, three of you have to say, "No, we don't want this one." But I do think what Commissioner Morris has brought up is, you need to have an overall game plan instead of looking at them just individually as they come in. Where do you want to end up with this? Because I, I think that at some point in time, perhaps as incentives wear out or not available, we may not receive the same requests that we've had. And I can't tell you that, I'm just kind of, you know, reading some material saying that eventually the tax credits and things that make these things good investments for company will slow down. And based on, you know, our current situation, we're all kind of at odds of what's going to happen next. So, yeah, I mean, we can ask, but ultimately, they're going to ask, well, what's the board of commissioners? You know, what are they looking for out of this? Are you looking to be restrictive? Or are you looking just to put more guidelines on it? Or are you looking to expand renewable energy sources?
Well, that's some of the questions, what you're just suggesting. There's some of the questions I'd like to see our planning board deal with and eventually put it into a recommendation for our board to consider. I, somehow I kind of feel like we're kind of leaving them out of the process so far.
Well, they're in the process. We just haven't had a direction to send back to them, because they're going to look at it from the ordinance standpoint. And I haven't addressed it, because this is really the first time, other than the first hearing, there was a lot of discussion, that some of the same questions came back up. And there wasn't a unanimous vote on this last hearing.
It was pretty close, actually.
It could have been, it could have went the other way, except for one vote.
I would appreciate whether we input as far as a recommendation, like they normally give us on zoning issues, regarding the moratorium, our next steps for solar panels. You've got the 1%, that's sounding reasonably good to me. We're at 138 of a percent now. And is that a, is that a line of demarcation, so to speak? Is that how far we want to go? And then say, "Whoa, let's stop there," and kind of give things a chance to settle in, and then see where we need to go. But I kind of, I would appreciate a planning board recommendation.
I think that's reasonable enough that we can present it to them, and that the board would like to hear your opinion is before they make a decision. And at that point, then you can take what they give me, and I'll give to you. And then you perhaps can give direction on how to go about achieving that.
Right, that's good. Yeah, I was going to say, and I'll give Commissioner Morris. But it sounds like to me you're asking for direction from the board. And we're, we've got board members wanting input from the planning board. And without our chairman here tonight, but I would see it coming back up on our next agenda again to see where we want to go.
August 4th, we'll have a commissioners' meeting for the planning item that we have in July. And I surely can give you an update, because I'll take care of it at that meeting, and I can give you some indication of what I get from them at that July meeting.
And we'll have another meeting in July, so it's good if we can discuss that.
So do you, do you want to put this back on our July meeting? Or do you want to wait until you have the planning meeting with David on August the 4th?
August 4th. We'll have ours on the 23rd, and then I'll talk to them about it that evening and see what I get from them, that the board is asking for, what do you think? And I'm sure they'll have some ideas.
See, our next meeting is the 27th.
I think, I think that was the comment made before, that we wanted to get the input from David and the planning board before we moved any more.
So.
Whatever y'all want.
If you could just have some.
Well, like I said, we all have one case on the August 4th meeting.
On August 4th, July 27th. Okay.
Commissioner Morris, go ahead first.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, as long as we don't approve any solar farms. I don't care what we do, how long we take, but.
Well, they don't have any.
Well, you can always, you can always not place it on the agenda. The board has discretion of what comes on the agenda. So we've done this before, where we had something we needed to address, even though it was pending.
I'm just worried about that third one. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, you were saying at your next meeting, you don't have that. You've just got a rezoning.
You have one commercial rezoning request.
I'm just concerned about that third one that you said somebody's been prowling around.
I have been contacted, but I haven't heard anything since June, first of June.
So Shannon has wanted to know, do we want to put this back on the 27th agenda? Or if we want to put it on our first agenda in August?
Well, his dates runs out at the 4th.
Why don't you do it on the 4th, because you'll be meeting with the planning board at that time.
Will you be made on the planning issue? We'll be doing a commissioners' meeting for the plan.
So what, you know, my, my, I'll just tell you, my thought process here is I want to be restrictive on these things. You know, the other board members can be less restrictive, more restrictive. I have a lot of very specific things I'd like to see in the policy. And so I don't know what, are we using the planning board as a fact-finding group now? Or what, how, how's this work for setting policy?
Well, the planning board can also recommend.
Do they do policy for us, policy recommendations?
Sure, sure. I mean, we've done that in the past. It's just that they, usually they're directed to look into an issue and.
I just don't remember them looking into any the whole time I was here, but maybe they did.
Well, a lot of it is told from me to do it. So you may not see it, but a lot of it does come from the.
I don't have any problem with dealing with, talking with them to figure it out, but we have.
We can have joint meeting if you like at some point in time during the process. But your question about a moratorium is timeframe, so of what you want to do on it. You know, you can do it, but if we're going to act quickly, I need to get their opinion, and then I need to let that go to you, and then you need to get back to me if, you know, exactly how restrictive or, and then understand the total process, that you have a lot of control already. And that what these ordinances had that I looked through and what I've seen is not very different from what we've already done and put in place is the conditional.
Yeah, but we need more, we need more than that, in my opinion, so.
I think that it's pretty obvious that our chairman's not here tonight. And he certainly, I know, has expressed to me that he wants to express his opinion on it. Therefore, without him here, we're just at this point, go with, what date did we say?
August, August the 4th, which will be when you meet with David for a planning issue.
I'd agree, and I don't think we have, we have. I'd agree, and I don't think we have, we have to be in a hurry on this at all, as long as we don't approve any more farms for the year. I mean, that, you need to take it, do it correctly, and, but the, uh, but I'm very, I'm very interested in a specific geographic restriction.
I don't think it's in a hurry, I don't think.
Well, I'll get you, I'll talk to the chairman of the planning board tomorrow, and let him know, uh, and because the board did have a lot of questions.
What we'll do, Dave, is when Andy gets back in town Thursday, he'll get with Shannon and Jake, and they'll get with you, and coordinate the time, okay?
Just a couple more comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, you know, when you talk to them, tell them I'm interested in a geographic restriction, a percentage, I'm interested in the impact on tourism, and the aesthetics of the county, and some of these unique things in the river, and all this, the impacts it could have as far as the river and the water sheds and so forth, um, and I, I would like specific requirements and restrictions, not just kind of do it each time in the conditional zoning process, even though, I agree with what you're saying, that we can actually do a lot with that.
Well, we can put standards, that's not a question, and then you can add to those standards, based on that individual's, like we did the last one.
And then one thing, too, this, this comment you make, that, oh, we'll agree to disagree, or not really disagree, but, but the fact that the land, we determined this land is no good for anything else now, to me, that's a little bit of a misnomer, because there's no telling what Elon Musk could do with this land 40 years from now, or 30 years from now, or 20 years from now, that we don't even have on the radar scope right now. So, just saying the land's no good for anything else for the next 40 years, that's something I don't think ought to be part of our evaluation process for, for this. So maybe if it is, it should be...
I, I see what you're saying, but that's part of my 32 years of here, knowing how we...
Well, that's historical, but that ain't future, you ain't been here the next 40 years.
Well, I can't, I can't predict the future, but it's...
One more comment, and then we're going to have to take a five-minute break.
And then one last thing, I don't like these solar people, I'll give you another example, I don't believe a half what they tell me, but they just lobbied against this pipeline and got canceled in the eastern part of the state. That's real economic development that could help those people. This power is 10 times more efficient, or 100 times more efficient than solar power the fossil fuels are, and all the economic development that would have resulted in a, in a pretty challenged part of the state's, now gone because of these guys, these lobbies and all these left-wing guys that don't want to do pipelines, which is the most efficient and safe way to transport and control them.
That was something the planning board brought up, about subsidized energy.
Commissioner Walker, one more comment, and we're going to take a five-minute break.
David, David and fellow commissioners, one reason that I mentioned involving our planning board, is I was reading a, some information furnished in our agenda packet, Washington County Solar Ordinance, and it says, whereas the Washington County Planning Board has meant, given reasonable consideration to, and has recommended in writing, that said zoning ordinance be amended, and then it goes on to say in another, um, paragraph, whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners has considered the recommendation of the Washington County Planning Board, has carefully considered all viewpoints expressed during the public hearing, if any, and anyhow, you get to drift.
Well, by law, that's everything we do, the planning board has to give you a recommendation by state law, for you to hear it in your public process.
Right.
So that's the same with this.
I'll be waiting for the, for our planning board's recommendation.
All right.
We need to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you, David. One more comment, and we're gonna take a five minute break. David and fellow commissioners, one reason that I mentioned involving our planning board is I was reading a, some information furnished in our agenda packet, Washington County Solar Ordinance, and it says, whereas the Washington County Planning Board has meant, given reasonable consideration to, and has recommended in writing, that said And then it goes on to say in another paragraph, whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners has considered the recommendation of the Washington County Planning Board, has carefully considered all view boards expressed during the public hearing, if any, but anyhow, you get to draft.
Well, by law, that's everything we do. The planning board has to give you a recommendation by state law for you to hear it in your public process.
Right. So, I'll be waiting for the, for our planning board's recommendation.
All right.
We need to take a five minute break. Thank you.
Thank you, David. [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Where'd Ty go? All right, yes. I did my trace. I would like to ask the board for their attention just a minute, see if we can make a, make a change, and I'm gonna make sure with Ty that we're good to go with this. We approved the agenda as is, as far as everything on it. We do have the Hart River Access easement request, which is the second request from the bottom, down near the bottom, it's right near the bottom. And our citizens that are here for that, they are here and to help them out, for them not to have to sit here through basically the whole meeting, I was wondering if the board would consent to moving it up to our next item and putting it in front of the bids for the solid waste scale house, and them sitting, a couple sitting in the back. I could get them on out of here if everybody would be in agreement with that.
I am.
Sure. Okay, I'll see how they're shaking, Ty, that's.
Which one?
Hart, Hart River.
Is that the one you're gonna get on now?
Yeah, we wanna move up to right now.
Okay.
Item K.
Yep.
Okay. And I'll be more than happy to go ahead and take care of that for you right now, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to move into it.
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, the Hart Access is, it says on 704 at Dan River.
Yes.
I was contacted by Mr. and Ms. Josie concerning access across this property into their farm. Met with them and looked at the access at that, that site, Stokes County, that they used to have access, they could cross into their property into a, a farm building they have located on their tract of land, when the Harts owned it, and it was pretty much just a verbal agreement. But they've always had access there. Now they're asking, could they have the same access here on the same property that they have before? And, but, but we, that is county property now, it's public lands, it's gonna be something other than, we just can't do a verbal agreement. So, with that, I got to talking with Ty and see what, what is the best possible solution we can do with this, with, before we come to the board, and he's recommended a, an agreement type and not an actual deed of easement. This would be agreement easement that Ty and I will work on with the Josies, and allow this to be a recorded agreement, and, and giving them access into their property at the Hart site. And in, in the same sense, it will protect the county and it could be something that can be done away with, with, with the approval of this board or with the Josies if they would like to. But anyway, with that, I would, I would ask them for permission for the board to allow Ty and I to move forward with, given access to the Josies to utilize the roadbed on the Hart Road Access property. And, and it would be in an agreement, and, and that way, we can bring it back to the board, and maybe it'd be something that would work out well for the, for the Josies and for the county, and everybody can utilize their property like they've always done in the past. The, the Josies are here, if you would like to ask them some questions, Michael and Kelly Josie, and if there was something you want to ask them, I'm sure that they would be more than happy, and if you would like to say something on this, by all means, please step up and talk about this. But I would like to move forward with, with the board's consent to do so.
Well, I feel like that, I don't have any problems with it, it seems like a positive request to me, that they, they want to take care of this. Go ahead, as far as I'm concerned, go ahead and fix it.
Thank you. Commissioner Walcott.
Thank you, sir. I certainly support the request, but with a little bit of a question, and that is, hopefully this could be done, and I think it could be, I'd like some input from the Josies or our manager somewhat, regarding can this be done where there's no downside for the county or other citizens? And I assume that it can, I, I would think so, but I'd like to hear somebody say that.
We, I had spoken with the Josies concerning the, what the county was using this for, and what the county is using this for is a river access for, for the public and the citizens of Stokes County. I said, the last thing we wanted to have is any kind of future development that would go on this tract of land of theirs, and that would, that would impact the, the site there and the manner to where it was just a lot of traffic flow. And they, if you look at the property, it's kind of hard to do that, you know, because of the way the terrain lays. So, but anyway, the way we do that is we don't encumber the Hart property with an easement that is recorded to a deed that follows the land. We do an agreement like Ty said we need to do, and that's with the individuals and not with the land.
So, so are we looking at a situation here where you, you mentioned a farm building, would they just need this access for farming purposes?
It allows them to get to the backside of the property on the river, and it also allows them to get to the farm, farm structure, building.
And it's not intended to go for development or anything, just for, for sort of specific purposes?
Yep. It, it's such a steep incline that it would be hard to get any kind of development on this piece of property, but.
I don't mean ours, I mean.
Theirs also.
Right.
So, but, but when you do this agreement, you write in this agreement what both parties would love to have in it.
Right.
Make sure that you'll take care of, but that agreement is to the individual, it's not an, it's not something that's an encumbrance to the property like an easement would be.
I understand. Mr. Moore.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a second, I have a couple more questions. Is this your guys' only access to that land back there? Can you get there other ways too? This is the only one?
The way, the way the land is, there's no other way.
Oh, okay, okay, that's important, another reason we need to do this. Are you aware of any, any neighbors or anybody that would have an objection to this, or any reason to object to it?
There's no, we're the only neighbor that connects to that piece of property.
Okay.
So, we, we have used that ever since we've lived there 20 years, and, but we, we just use it for personal use, there would be no reason to, to, and there's no possible way to use it for development, but we wouldn't be using it for development, it's just for personal use.
Mm-hmm.
For us, for our family, for our family members, so if we handed it down to our children there, it would be, you know, they would enjoy it, but you can't, you can't and you wouldn't want to develop that because it's, it's impossible.
It's really none of our business what you do with your own land, anyway, but the, okay, good, the, so the other thing is, and this is for Ty, I think, so really what we're doing is we're gonna do an agreement that would do everything an easement would do, except we're not gonna have an easement, is that kind of what the objective is, with that it won't encumber the land, but it'll give them?
What I discussed with Jake was a permissioned use agreement.
Okay.
Which, I understand that in the past, they, they had permissioned uses right away, right away, for first-hand purposes. And we would just prepare an agreement incorporating that we will continue to allow them to use.
Okay.
But we need to put specific conditions towards the use for, or to not use for.
Okay.
It would be a permissioned use agreement if it wasn't.
Yeah, exactly.
So, if it, you know.
Or their purpose, it would accomplish the same thing, though, basically, right?
Allow them to continue to use it, but if situations change in the future that it became a problem, then the county would have to like to, you know, to use.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives the county the maximum benefit of the, if it were never a problem, then the permissioned use could be used. But, but you wouldn't want to lock yourself in, into a formal lease.
Yeah.
It couldn't change in the future.
I understand that.
If the situation changed.
My, the next question is typically for an agreement like this, how would you set it up as far as the length of time it lasts, or renews, or?
You wouldn't have, it would just be indefinite.
Be indefinite, okay.
It would be a permissioned use, which would continue as long as, until the county was up to you.
What, what, how would it pass to, like, new family members and stuff? Would you have to redo, or just change the names or redo the agreement if, say, at some point it was inherited by their kids or something?
No.
Would it would stay, it'd just stay as is?
Right.
It doesn't have a cutoff in a renewal period, it's just indefinite?
It's just indefinite.
Okay.
And it'd be terminal, terminable at will, at camp.
Okay.
So, at any point, if it became a problem, it's terminated.
Okay, okay.
As opposed to, if you grant a formal lease, then that, that's.
It is, yeah, it's in place.
That continues up until the party agrees, terminated.
I think for, for your protection, we need to do this, because verbal agreements that deal with land issues are not good things usually, I don't think. I mean, they're okay if they work, but they can very easily not work at some point in time, so I'm all in favor of putting a good agreement together to do this, is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and, and I have no problem with this at all. I'm in favor of this. So, Ty, as far as the timeframe, you need to get this ready. Could you have it ready at the next meeting?
Sure.
So we can put this on action at the next meeting?
I have one more.
Okay.
Now, there's a couple of gates on this property. Since we bought it, it is our gates, right?
Yes.
And it would be some, these gates would need to be readjusted, relocated, changed to where the, the Josies would have access, or maybe they're the ones that put the lock on it, because once we moved the gate, or bought it, they bought it and you want to put it on there, then it would be at the boundary, and it would be their responsibility to keep it up and.
Right, and that's something that would need to be incorporated into the agreement, and we're responsible.
So, the existing gates we have now, we can go ahead and, and, with the board's permission to have them, let them go ahead and take those down.
Would y'all like to add anything else?
Um, the, things that, with the agreement, would there be concrete outlines of the agreement saying, okay, the county approves for the use, but not for this? In other words, you know the, the do's and the don'ts, so that in the future, let's say, all of us are gone, or somebody else, let's say, we just don't want you to have access, well, there's concrete verbiage that says it can be used for this and so, and cannot be used for this.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we would include, what it, what it would be used for.
I'll pick that for you.
And it, you know, no, no commercial use, for the entire, for the, the first one used for them and their.
Thank you.
It'd be a little more precise than that, but that's, that's the idea.
Any other questions? All the commissioners?
One quick question, would farm use be a commercial use if they're using it for farming?
Yeah, it would be.
Is that okay or not okay?
Well, that'd be up to the board, you want.
Do you anticipate in farming use?
Supposedly.
Oh, okay.
So, it'd be just basically for your own person, personally, for yourselves and your thing, access in verse and in verse.
I'll ask a, a question to Commissioner Morris, to Ty, please. Right now, and the land apparently is, some topography there that would have to be dealt with in certain ways if it was going to be farmed, but if someone had a farming operation, they wanted to trial that land in the future, would it be incorporated into the agreement either now or later that farming uses were allowed? You're always changing. Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Would it be better to go ahead and allow farming uses, or to maybe change it? Well, if there's no anticipated farming use, I would rather just restrict it to just personal use. So, but whatever. No commercial farming. Whatever things changed, that, that should be dealt with. Thank you, thank you, sir.
All the commissioners, okay, I'll put your action at the next meeting.
Yep.
Put it on the action at the next meeting.